Good afternoon, everyone. This is the November 12, 2024 Committee Hearing, Committee of the Whole. I am your City Council President, Nick J. Mosby here. To my left is Councilwoman Odette Ramos. We also have on the dais Chairman Robert Stokes and Chairman Mark Conway. The first bill we're going to hear is City Council Bill 24-0594, Citywide Affordable Housing Bond Issuance. If we could start off, Mr. CFO, if you can announce yourself, and then if we could do a round robin for everyone to announce themselves to put on the record.
Good afternoon. My name is Michael Moxton. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the City of Baltimore.
Good afternoon. I'm Janelle Rogers, Chief Bureau Treasury Management.
I'm Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department.
Hi, this is Zachary Wellman Equity Policy Analyst for the Office of Equity and Civil Rights.
Good afternoon. This is Tom Wellie, on behalf of Baltimore Development Corporation.
Good afternoon. I'm Crystal Highplod, I'm with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City.
Good afternoon. Austin Davis, representing Department of Planning.
Nina Themelis, Director of Government Relations for the Mayor's Office.
Stephanie Murdock, the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Stacy Freed, Department of Housing and Community Development.
Alice Kennedy, Commissioner, Department of Housing and Community Development.
Thank you so much. And the facilitator of today's discussion is the illustrious Ms. Margaret Kern, who is here supporting the committee and supporting this amazing hearing. So we're going to start off with you, Mr. CFO, or you, Madam Commissioner? Madam Commissioner, the floor is yours.
Excellent, thank you. We can, um, good afternoon, Mr. President, and good afternoon, members of the committee. It's good to see everyone here this afternoon for the hearing on our 24-0594, our citywide affordable housing bond issuance, as well as our 24-0595, the citywide housing district. And we are ready to move to our presentation that we have for you this afternoon. Excellent. Okay, we can go to the next slide. Perfect. So we'll start here just with a status of where we are, an overview of the TIF. We'll talk about a little bit about how it ties in with the larger vacancy reduction initiative, and then talk specifically about the two bills, the bond issuance bill, as well as the development district. Next slide. So areas of information. The City Council Bill 24-0594 is for the purpose of authorizing the issuance of the special obligation bonds not to exceed $65,000 for the purpose of financing costs associated with the rehabilitation of vacant units. We're going to talk about the authorization amount, the legislation, compliance, reporting, how, looking at the tranches, et cetera. On the next slide, you'll see that this is about Council Bill 24-0595, which is the purpose of designating the development district themselves, which will be known as the Citywide Affordable Housing Development District. We'll talk about an overview of the properties in the development district, how we went through the selection of those properties, and the amendment to that bill that we're looking at about adding, adding properties. If we can go now, two more slides. And next slide. So a little bit of an update just on the status of the legislation and where we heard today. In May of 2024, we had the Board of Finance conceptual approval. As with any tax increment financing, Board of Finance needs to make their approval in order to bring, in order to bring the tax increment financing to the City Council for approval. So we started with that in May of 2024. We've also had briefings with City Council President Mosby, as well as different briefings as well with members of, of the council. And in July, we also received approval from the Board of Finance to move it forward to City Council for, for legislation. And we've briefed pretty much every single councilperson on the TIF. We've answered questions, and it was introduced at the September 30th meeting. Next slide. Overview, next slide of the TIF. This is the first city tax increment financing to focus on neighbor, on neighborhoods, and really our disinvested neighborhoods, where you can see the overlay of our concentration of, of black residents with the concentration of blight and vacant properties. It is citywide, and it also supports multiple, multiple different users of the TIF dollars, as you'll see as we get into this. This isn't just for one or two singular development partners. This is for many, and it also can support not just a developer, but if I own a property that is on the TIF, the TIF list in the TIF district and want to renovate, I can also qualify for funds to do that. It does also support affordable housing, and it helps create those equitable mixed-income neighborhoods. Next slide. So the objectives here that we're talking about, $65 million first bond authorization, which is part of the larger $150 million TIF strategy over 15 years. This supports the mayor's 15-year, the $3 billion vacancy reduction initiative, which is also supported by the state, as well as the governor. We'll get into that a little bit later on as well. This provides the infusion of funds that's needed to do this work at scale. As we've talked about before, and as many of you have heard, one of the biggest issues that we have, if not the singular issue, is needing to have funding available to do this work and to create the outcomes that support whole block redevelopment. Specifically, this will help close the appraisal gap, as well as create the funds needed to reach different income goals and, and sales prices as well. Next slide. Oh, I did want to also highlight that we do have an emphasis on priority for legacy residents, as well as those households earning 60% of area meeting income. On the next slide, the TIF funds will be managed by DHCD. I just want to be very clear on what that means. The, the tax increment financing funds are not part of DHCD's budget. They're not in an account that is managed by DHCD. When we say that we'll manage them, it means that we will use the same platform that we use now in terms of our developer incentive applications, et cetera. We'll have a special application set up for this. All those applications are done through Neighborly. We review them. But when it comes time to actually pay bills, we do a review to ensure that the bill meets what the allowable costs were, are allowed to be spent on. Then we send that to Munichap. They do a second review. And then it goes to Treasury, and Janelle Rogers, Chief of Treasury, actually is the one that pays the bill out of a special treasury account. So the funds from the tax increment financing sit in a special account. They do not sit as part of DHCD's budget. And we also do have some public infrastructure funding that will be subject to approved developers' agreements as well. Next slide. So the funds can be used for two purposes. They can be used actual for hard construction costs to restore vacant buildings, so that we're talking drywall, electrical, nails, lumber, roofing, all of the good stuff on hard construction costs related to the construction. And we also can do the design and construction of new public infrastructure on vacant lots that supports us getting a whole block outcome that is needed. On the next slide, this is part of the vacancy reduction initiative. And, you know, we're looking at, you know, we've seen a consistent reduction in, and decrease in the number of vacant properties since 2020, over 17%, but we know we have more and further to go, especially in order to achieve the whole block outcomes and to see our communities heal and be made whole again in a holistic approach. Next slide. In December of 2023, the mayor, standing with Build and Greater Baltimore Committee, announced basically a plan for a $3 billion financial strategy over 15 years to be able to tackle vacant properties at scale, which includes a $900 million-plus investment from the state, as well as the $300 million investment from the city, which would include up to $150 million of tax increment financing, of which the legislation before you today goes, provides the approval for up to $65 million of that $150 million moving forward. I also want to just stop here real quick just to thank our partners in the, in the Finance Department for working on this, as well as the consultants that we've had working on this, whether or not it be McGuire Woods, which is our bond counsel, and Alan Kason, or, or our Munichap with, with Keenan and, Keenan Rice and Max Levy at Munichap as well, helping to guide us through this. I also want to acknowledge Joe Meyerhoff. He was one that kind of started talking about a non-contiguous TIF around the same time that I became Acting Commissioner and had started to have conversations with many people in the world about how we could continue to look at ways to increase funding to tackle vacant properties. And I was looking at TIF options and how best to do that. Some of the conversations that make it hard is that you have a traditional TIF district. So really, a lot of the work and research work that Mr. Meyerhoff had put into this really helped us to be able to get to where we are today and kind of take that, put it in with, you know, the Finance Department's work and, and kind of come up with the, the plan that you, that you see before you today. So specifically for, on the next slide, we talk about 24-0594, the citywide affordable housing bond issuance component. So this is, like I said, it authorizes, on the next slide, you'll see it authorizes up to that $65 million in bonds. It recognizes the goal of the $150 million. It does require spending plan that's endorsed by the Chief Equity Officer, as well as submitted to the council. And, you know, we want to be prioritizing legacy residents, as well as residents that are 60% of, as well as also 60% area meeting income, and then also 80% of area meeting income as well. It also states that the Department of Finance and Housing will prepare an annual report that will be submitted to council. And it also requires that the Department of Finance provide those updated PRAG studies and, and on, on bond ratings. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Director Moxton to talk about the component of this and the bond issuance around generating increment and repaying those bonds.
Next slide, please. Thank you, thank you so much, Commissioner Kennedy, and good afternoon, councilmembers. So the size of each TIF bond will be supported by the increase in property taxes within the TIF district. We're doing this in tranches. For the first round of borrowing, that bond, that debt service is going to be supported by increment from formerly vacant properties that have already been rehabbed within the last two years. Properties that have received a use and occupancy permit between January 1st, 2023, and the last reassessment before the bonds are issued. So we're kind of calling that tranche zero. The properties that are done already and producing tax increment backs tranche one, which will be our first round of borrowing. Tranche one will then back tranche two. So additional bond sales will be supported by a combination of redevelopment of properties that received an allocation of TIF properties and other vacant properties that received a use and occupancy permit. So basically, tranche one will back tranche two, tranche two will back tranche three, and so on as needed. Next slide, please. This is a tested and fiscally prudent approach. We, uh, in finance, typically consult with outside experts to look at whether or not our debt strategy is safe and sustainable. We, last year, consulted with the Public Resources Advisory Group, PRAG, to look at our overall borrowing strategy, which includes a gradual ramp up in our general obligation bonds. This fall, we asked PRAG to provide an update to their analysis that includes scenarios for the TIF bonds. What they found was that the key benchmarks that we would be staying within are consistent with the city's current bond rating of AA for GO and can be maintained in all tested scenarios. The scenarios they tested included both gradual and accelerated issuance of either the $65 million in TIFs that we're asking for authorization for today, or the full $150 million strategy eventually envisioned. And we did this essentially to kind of test things to their maximum and look at the extremes. What we found is that in both the regular scenario, where we just issue tranches every couple of years, and the extreme scenarios where we do everything all at once, we still stay within those thresholds that we would consider to be consistent with a AA bond rating. Now, with that being said, PRAG advises us that generally selling bonds in multiple tranches across a longer period is the safest possible approach. Next slide, please. This TIF is a little bit different from other TIFs, and the main way in which it's different is, as Commissioner Kennedy talked about, it's non-contiguous. TIFs traditionally were just lying around a map, but all a TIF is legally is just a list of addresses. And here, we have a list of vacant properties that meet the guidelines we're looking for, and the TIF becomes dots on a map. A special tax is not required for this TIF, essentially because it's targeting vacancies. And by targeting vacancies, we get a very high increment in assessment from what the, what the property was generating before to what it generates after the rehab. So the increment without even a special tax is more than sufficient to back the next round of debt service on the next tranche. There is no one master developer. Rather, here there is a mix of many developers of all sizes, as well as even individual homeowners who are eligible to apply for these grants as well. And finally, the debt is backed by existing revenue. And we did this to create additional safety in this TIF, since there isn't just one developer to put on the hook. What we're doing here is, rather than saying, we'll borrow the money and then, and then wait for the project to, to be done, we are borrowing the money against houses that are done already. So this is an existing revenue stream. Basically, everything is kind of offset, like, like we talked about before. Tranche zero backs tranche one. Next slide, please. There is no impact from this TIF on the city's GO bonds. From a legal liability perspective, the city has no liability for TIF debt service beyond the legally designated tax increment. And this is standard on all TIF bonds. Debt will only be issued when tax increment revenues in an amount exceeding 125% coverage of debt service have been demonstrated. So we talked before about the revenue increment backs debt service, not just one for one, but 1.25 for one, for additional safety. And remaining risk is assumed by the bondholders. Any extra property tax revenue above and beyond what's needed for debt service coverage is required in this legislation to be transferred back to the general fund. Next slide. There is strong market demand for TIFs in general, and we believe there will be demand for these TIFs specifically. Past issuances of TIF bonds, both in Baltimore and nationally, have been significantly oversubscribed. TIF bonds without special backing, that is, without a special revenue or a single developer that takes liability, are common nationally, even though it's new to this jurisdiction. But there are many, many of these examples every year around the country. Baltimore's staggered revenue approach provides additional safety to investors. Like we talked about, there is hard money that already exists and is coming into the city that will be backing every round of borrowing. The non-contiguous approach means that any risk is further diffused across thousands of properties. So rather than one mega project that can succeed or fail, we are really doing thousands of micro projects with ones that are already done backing, backing the next wave. And TIF bonds do carry some interest premium, but this is modest and manageable. In our research around the country, we see that TIFs in the past year had an interest of between 4.5 and 5.5%. It's been a pretty high interest period for the country overall, and interest rates are coming down. This is about a percentage point or so higher than what GOs would, would come at, but it is well within the manageable range. And that makes it worth it, because GOs are great. GOs are kind of the, the cheapest way that we have to borrow. But we can only borrow so much GO. That was the purpose of the original PRAG study a year ago, is to look at how we can carefully expand our GO borrowing, and it is already fully utilized for all the things that we're going to need to do. So a TIF is an extremely vital accompaniment to GO borrowing in what it provides. I'll pass it back to Commissioner Kennedy. Next slide, please.
Next, we can go to the next slide. We're talking a little bit about now 24-0595, the citywide affordable...
It's fine.
Is it okay?
Yeah, I just want to just clarify so for the viewing audience and for folks that will watch this later. We are in session right now, and we are basically hearing two bills simultaneously. They're companion bills. Again, the first bill is Council Bill 24-0594, Citywide Affordable Housing Bond Issuance. And the second, again, is Council Bill 24-0595, Citywide Affordable Housing and Development District. The councils, at this point, have been joined by Chairman Costello, Chairman Bullock, as well as Councilman Zeke Cohen. So Madam Chair, if you could continue. I'm sorry, Madam Commissioner.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so now officially on 24-0595, this is the citywide actual TIF district. So the one bill creates the bond issuance. The other bill creates the TIF district in itself. Previous tax increment financing bills that have come before the City Council, the TIF district is a very specific area on the map, drawn with boundaries around certain overlays. An example, most recently, would be Perkins Somerset Old Town, which had those. This TIF district includes, right now, 7,925 properties. We do have a request, an amendment, a proposed amendment that would add an additional 672 properties to the, to the development district. This district and, and these properties represent areas of our impact investment areas. It represents our other community areas of focus, and it represents where we're actively working to reduce vacant properties and promote, and promote new development. There are two different groups of properties that make up the TIF district. The first group is the group of properties that's used to generate the increment for the, the first tranche. These are properties that have either undergone renovation and, and received their use and occupancy permit already in 2024, as well as 2023. They also include ones that we have that have open permits, where the work is actively ongoing at this time, and that helps to create the increment that seeds that first tranche, which is the difference here that Director Moxton talked about in the, in his remarks, and that the, the increment is already existing, and that revenue is existing to support the first tranche of, of bonds. On the next slide, you'll see, overall, this is the 7,925 properties, not representing the amendment. So this is as the bill is written. And it outlines those properties, which ones we have that are INREM eligible, that also are mayor and city council owned, also vacant lots that we have that'll be eligible as well for projects. So like I said, it's the first group of properties that recommend, represent the group of properties to achieve the increment for that first tranche, and then it has the properties that would be eligible to receive the funding to be able to, to do the repairs, et cetera. And next slide shows the TIF properties by council district. Overall, the TIF district includes approximately 197 neighborhoods. It has our, our impact investment areas, our community areas of focus, our community asset building neighborhoods, our other geographic areas of focus. On the next, yep, this slide, you can see a summary by council district in terms of the number of properties, and also what we had proposed on the original, and then also total proposed properties as well. We'll get through here fairly, well, doesn't have to be quick, but we have a slide that represents the number of properties for each district. So if we go to the next slide, this is the first council district represented, and it breaks it down for the total number of properties, which is 112, and it breaks it down on what is, you know, being used to either produce increment to help pay for that first tranche, or what properties are in the pipeline that would be able to receive funds from, from the TIF. Second council district is the next slide. This has a total of 77 properties that are represented. Third council district is a total of 50 properties represented. Fourth council district, we get to a total of 118 properties represented. Fifth council district, 113 properties. Sixth council district, the slide is incorrect for the sixth council district. My apologies. I'll have to get back on that one. Seventh council district, 960 properties. Eighth council district, 166. And then the ninth council district actually has the majority of, of properties at over 2,000, 2,000 properties represented in the ninth council district for, and the majority of these properties are actually, would be eligible for receipt of, of TIF bonds to be able to do the work. Tenth council district is represented with 411. Council district at 280. Twelfth council district, we start to pick up a little bit more with 1,246 properties. And then we move to the 13th council district at 189, and then 14th council district at 532 properties. Our amendment on the next slide, the amendment is requesting an additional 672 properties to be added to the development district. 66 of the properties are being added at the request of our community development partners and would benefit. And then we were able to capture an additional 606 properties where they've received the use and occupancy permit in the, in, or permitting in the last several months before the first analysis was completed, and that would support that first tranche of bonds to ensure that we're over the 125% debt coverage to ensure that we can go to market with the first tranche. And with that, that ends the presentation that we have here today. Overall, the Department of Housing and Community Development requests a favorable report on Council Bill 24-0594, and we request a favorable report with amendments on Council Bill 24-0595.
Thank you, Madam Commish. We're going to turn it over to council members. Before we do so, I want to give the agencies an opportunity to just on the record, you know, provide your status of favorable, unfavorable with amendments. So we'll just start with, we don't need to go, we'll start with Finance.
Thank you.
For obvious reasons, but it's just important that we, from a formality perspective, put on the record.
The Department of Finance stands by its favorable report.
The Law Department?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Hillary Ruley, on behalf of the Law Department. With respect to City Council Bill 24-0594, we have a technical amendment. We've had it, I've drafted it, it's there. It's just to insert the word "mayor" and before City Council. So that's the amendment on that one, and we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency. We also approve all the amendments to this bill that have been proposed, I believe, by the council president's office. With respect to City Council Bill 24-0595, we approve the bill for form and legal sufficiency and would... and would approve the addition of the properties requested in the amendment from HCD.
Thank you. Next up, we're going to go to Department of Planning.
The Department of Planning supports both with favorable.
Thank you. Department of Housing and Community Development, you think we can get your support?
DHCD supports Bill 24-0594 with a favorable report and supports Council Bill 24-0595 with favorable with amendments.
Office of Equity?
Thank you, Mr. President. Zachary Roman, Office of Equity and Civil Rights. The OECR requests a favorable report on City Council Bill 24-0594 and a favorable report on 24-0595 as well. Thank you.
Thank you so much. BDC?
Thank you, Mr. President. Tom Welly on behalf of BDC, we stand by our favorable report for both bills.
And last and certainly not least, Housing Authority of Baltimore City.
Thank you, President. My name is Crystal High-Ply. I'm with the Housing Authority of Baltimore City, and we defer to the Department of Housing Authority, of Housing Community Development on both bills. I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Thank you so much. At this time, we're going to open it up for any questions, concerns, or comments for the person that's going to be impacted the most by this. If it passes, we're going to turn it over to Chairman Bullock first.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Finance. Thank you, Housing. As you mentioned, you know, just how West Baltimore will be affected by this, particularly our district, but one of the things that, it's not a but, it's a good thing, but this TIF, as you mentioned, is different than other TIFs, right? Particularly with its noncontiguous approach and also was looking to do as far as vacancies. But I think one of the key things is that it's working with existing revenue versus future. So I understand, you know, why that is, but I'm sure that there are some who would say, why don't we do this with all TIFs? But I know there are some reasonings behind it. So could you explain, you know, again, we understand that the benefits that we get from using the existing revenue, you have that first tranche, it's going to be based upon those initial houses, but again, why you can do it in this case, and why it makes sense in this case, and why it could or could not make sense in other cases?
Absolutely. Thank you for the question. We have the ability to do something in a noncontiguous TIF that we normally wouldn't have the ability to do, and that's because this TIF by its nature is thousands of projects rather than one big project or one little, you know, one set of projects tightly contained. And because of that, that means that there is a constant flow. There are always more properties getting fixed and coming on board. That gives us the ability to make this TIF safer, and that's the real purpose and reasoning behind this is to make it more marketable to the folks that are going to be buying these bonds so that we can get a lower interest rate. We are starting out with revenue that is proven out, that's hard and in the bank already. Basically, we're doing it because we can, because that lets us then have a lower interest rate on our next borrowing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chairman Costello, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. At a hearing, Director, a couple of weeks ago, you assured me that there was no obligation on behalf of the city of Baltimore to repay bondholders and that the general fund would not be subject to the risk associated with paying off bondholders. So I want to give you a courtesy and a chance at a do-over at that question because perhaps you didn't fully understand the question that I was asking at the time. So let me reframe the question. Is the city obligated to ensure that bondholders are repaid? Yes or no?
Councilman, I appreciate the question. The city is obligated to meet the legal terms of the TIF. The legal terms of the TIF require that bondholders are repaid to the greatest extent possible from the TIF properties that are legally outlined in the TIF. And I stand by the original answer I gave you to the original question, but please allow me to expand on it. No, in a TIF, there is no requirement for the city broadly to backstop or, you know, to pick up some increment in some unforeseen scenario. That is simply not how TIFs have ever been done in the city of Baltimore or generally around the country, and that's for a reason. The whole point of revenue bonds is to not put pressure on your general obligation bonds. That is a big part of how we maintain our double A in this city is by making use of revenue bonds such as TIFs when there's an opportunity to do so. Investors understand this. It is very clearly outlined in the legal prospectus that they are only entitled to the incremental tax revenue from the defined TIF district, nothing more, nothing less. And there are, in the structure of how we do this, a lot of protections for investors such as the 125% coverage that we talked about earlier, and I'd be happy to expand on that more.
I appreciate that. I have to run to another meeting, and I'm hoping to come back and catch the tail end of this. My understanding is we don't have a quorum, Mr. President, so we won't be voting this out unless something in attendance changes in the, you know, next hour or so. What I will tell you is that the way that the city of Baltimore has always done TIFs is that there is the establishment of a special tax district, and with the establishment of that district, the responsibility or accountability for ensuring that investors, i.e. bondholders, are repaid is assumed by the developer, which oftentimes makes a TIF in the traditional sense that we have used those an effective tool to displace risk from the jurisdiction and to put that risk on the appropriate party, in that case, the developer. Because there is no one developer, there are quote-unquote, as you and the Housing Commissioner have said, thousands of potential developers, that risk seems to be distributed amongst unknown parties that have not been vetted for financial capacity, and that is extremely concerning to me, and it is what led me to make the assertion at the last meeting when we discussed this, it was a council meeting on a different topic, that these are junk bonds. I am concerned as to their viability in the marketplace, as to whether or not they will actually be purchased. So I appreciate your initial response. I do have to leave, as I previously stated, but I look forward to coming back to continue the conversation, whether it's today or to reconvene a session in the hearing. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Would you like to respond, Mr. CFO?
I would.
Yes, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. The type of TIF that is backed only by incremental revenue and not by a special tax or a specific commitment from a specific developer, that is not how Baltimore did it the last couple of TIFs that we did, but that is still quite common nationally. We worked with our advisors, with Munichap, to look at what the national landscape was. What we found is that there are dozens of what's kind of called technically a naked TIF. There are dozens of these all around the country, including some that were passed just recently. Just to give an example of one, there's one that Miami just passed in the past year for just under $200 million that is not backed by anything except for the tax increment. And ours is quite a bit safer because ours is backed by existing revenue that's already proven out. Naked TIFs nationally are backed by future revenue typically, and despite that, these TIFs sell and sell well, specifically on these types of TIF instruments is where that four and a half to five and a half percent interest rate range that I talked about earlier comes from. These are, these are not junk. These are very marketable nationally, and investors understand the risk that comes with them. What I'll say to sort of address that kind of scenario that's underlying all this, which is what happens if there is a failure? So just to talk out that scenario, we have 125% coverage on our debt from the tax increment that we're already getting. What would have to happen, quite simply, is the tax assessment, the property values on not just one house, but thousands of houses in this district would have to fall by more than 25% and stay there. Now, that 125 is an industry standard kind of for a reason. It is because that is as bad as it ever got during the Great Recession. So we're already talking about a scenario that is worse than the Great Recession, and that's part of what bondholders take on when they buy a bond and get that interest, they take on that risk. But I will say that in a scenario that is worse than the Great Recession and stays that way for years, whatever protection a bondholder might have gotten from a property developer backing it would be, in my professional opinion, weaker than what we're offering here because developers tend to go bankrupt in those kinds of extreme scenarios. What we're offering here is a hard stream of revenue with 125% ratio that backs the debt service on these bonds. That's why we strongly believe that these bonds are marketable and they are a good way forward.
Thank you, Mr. CFO. Councilwoman Ramos?
Thank you, Mr. President. First, I want to say that the fact that we're even having this discussion is a really big deal because we, the city of Baltimore, are trying to get creative about how to resolve our issues and to address vacant properties at scale. So I think it's great that we're being creative and have expressed my support for this. My questions are in the spirit of just making sure we're thinking about all the scenarios. So I have several questions, but I'll start off with this, with a couple. So the income restriction piece, so when, let's say, the bonds have already been floated, the fund is established, someone is rehabbing one of the properties that are on here, they get the use and occupancy, they get that money from the fund, and then sell the property to somebody who is 80% of AMI, let's say, okay? How long is that restriction supposed to last so that, does that person, if they want to resell it, how does that, how does that work? How long is that income restriction, and then how, what happens when there's a resale?
So based on what is outlined in the legislation, it is, the development plan has to show that at least 15% of the residents would be 80%, and 15% of the residents would be at 60% for the development plan for a property. It's on the first sale. That does not mean that there won't be income restrictions that are longer term that are put into place outside of what is required in the legislation. We're actually working, you know, funds from this will be utilized with our community land trust, funds of this will be used on properties with other deed restrictions to assist with long-term. That is a key piece of our anti-displacement strategy moving forward. We have to put into place guardrails that ensure that we have long-term affordability in our community. So the legislation specifically talks about the prioritization, and it talks about the development plan. Other components will come into place to provide the long-term restrictions.
So the, so the funds are really to make sure that we have, I'll say, semi-permanent affordability? Is it only, does the restriction only occur to that 15% that you mentioned? It's for all of them, I thought?
Yeah, so the funds support affordability, and they support, it's why it's the affordable housing, you know, tax increment financing. By what is allowed, we can go up to 115% of the income range. What we have negotiated and worked on with this is to prioritize the 60% and the 80%, especially on that first, that first sale. Just like any funds that we have access to and that we work on in terms of projects, there are projects that will be coming online as we work, as we have with communities where there will be properties that have longer-term affordability restrictions on them that will receive funds from the tax increment financing as well as funds from other sources to help create that long-term financing, long-term affordability.
So the, so just to be clear, so the life of, so if, let's say, a property receives $50,000, I'm just putting that number out there, to complete the project, then it has to be restricted to, could be any income restriction within the scale that you just provided? And then, but that restriction goes away at resale, or it does?
It, it depends on the property. It depends on the developer. It depends on the community. It depends on.
It depends on other financing that you want.
And other plans and programs where it is. So I can't say it'll go away because it might not go away, because if it's one of the properties that we have a long-term deed restriction, no, it won't go away.
Right.
Off to the first owner. It'll be there in, you know, for a long period of time.
Sure, if it goes to a community land trust or if it's.
Or we have other programs that we're putting together with deed restrictions as well. So I can't, it isn't a blanket, it'll go away because the legislation prioritizes, prioritizes, and then programmatically, we pick up because each community has different, you know, each community in Baltimore has different, you know, plans that they have for guardrails for creating long-term affordability, whether or not that be through the community land trust, whether or not it be through other deed restriction programs we have, et cetera.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, I do see it as a way to make sure that we're really being intentional about creating mixed-income communities. So I just wanted to understand a little bit clearer about how the deed restriction would work. My second question goes back to the increment. So it seems to me, since the CHAP tax credit, we'll use the CHAP tax credit as an example, it is, you know, 100% 10-years credit. So those properties that might be in on this list that the rehabber decides to use the tax credit will not be part of the increment?
It will be part of the increment. It'll be picked up on the increment after.
In 10 years.
In 10 years, and the analysis has been done by the, by the consultants on the financial analysis to look at and take in consideration any of those tax credits, which is another reason why as well we have the 125% minimum. And I want to also state that it's not a maximum of 125% debt coverage, and it's another reason why we've added the additional 600 properties to amend in to help ensure on that debt coverage on the first tranche as well, which helps us go into the second tranche and so forth.
Does a, does a developer then would have to choose between using the, using the funds and using a tax credit? Because you want to use, as we're rehabbing properties, doesn't matter whether it's market rate or affordable, we want to be able to still use that, I will, I'll call it potential increment, right, to be able to leverage additional funds. But if they use that, that CHAP tax credit as part of their stack, then there's nothing there except for 10 years down the line?
Well, the, they don't have to make a choice, and the developer doesn't use, because the CHAP, the CHAP tax credit goes to the homeowner that they're going to sell to. So it doesn't actually go to the capital stack on what's needed to rehabilitate the house. And when we look at also what is needed, because each project will be looked at, and the $50,000 is an average, it isn't the, this isn't, that this is absolutely. So depending upon what the appraisal gap is, depending upon what the sales price is, because sometimes with the CHAP tax credit, they're actually able to get a higher sales price, which actually would potentially reduce, which would actually reduce the amount that would be needed. We might only need to come in on the TIF with $20,000 or $15,000 or $30,000. So it will, they don't have to choose, and there will be that analysis too, to see where it is on the appraisal gap, as well as where are we in terms of the affordability outcome that we want to see.
Okay, thank you. I might have some follow-up, but I, and I have some other questions, but I'll yield to my colleague.
At this time, Chairman Conway, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. I really appreciate the questions that my colleagues have asked, very thoughtful questions, and it ties to a much more basic question for me as we think about how this is structured. And forgive me if this is too simple a question, but how do we know if it's working? Of course, we have, we want to see fewer vacant properties. That's pretty obvious. But when it comes to the tax increment and the tax revenue that we may see, that gets a little bit wonky. How do we know if it's working? When can we begin to tell? And how can we make sure that we're seeing the return on these funds going to this program to be certain that this is the best place to put them?
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember. That's a great question. I think it is fairly straightforward in that tranche one, we know will have worked when we see the tax increment from it. Because what that tax increment means is that those homes got built, got sold, somebody moved into them, somebody started paying taxes, usually a whole lot more taxes than what they were paying before back when that home was vacant. And when we see that increment from tranche one, that is when we make a decision on tranche two. That is when we say, okay, it's going as we planned, so we can afford to do another 20 million. We will never put out a tranche that is not fully backed with minimum 125% coverage with revenue from a previous tranche. And so, that's the proof. We have proof from tranche zero, that is those properties that have recently been rehabbed that already have new assessments, that already have new taxpayers living in them, and those are backing the first tranche. So, every time we complete a building, somebody moves into it and pays their taxes, we see that data point, that's the proof.
And just real quick, Mr. Chair and the CFO, not to jump in and answer, but we also work with the administration to ensure that there's annual reporting to the council as well as reauthorization in between the two tranches. So, that was kind of the safeguard that the administration partnered and worked with my office on to ensure just kind of some of the, to mitigate some of the risks that you might be concerned with.
Yeah, that's really helpful to know. It sounds like, to sort of even further simplify, it's when these properties exchange hands. So, when someone purchased the property, there would also be a transfer of recognition tax payment, so we could literally just track that and determine how quickly these properties are changing over.
That's right.
And have some rough assessment of what the value of the property is as a result, even if we're not necessarily seeing the taxes because maybe it's a bunch of CHAP properties that get a 10-year tax credit. We would still have some sense of the improvements in properties from other sources. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, that's absolutely right. And by the way, even if the CHAP credit applies, we would still see the sale, we would see the initial taxes and then the CHAP credit offset. And if a whole different host of negative assumptions play out, we will slow down by design if people aren't buying the houses fast enough. Or let's just say there is much more CHAP eligibility or some other kind of credit eligibility than we envisioned and we have to redo our numbers. In those scenarios, we are bound by, first of all, how much increment we can generate and, second, by our reporting to the council, as the President just mentioned, we will be coming back to you. And so, in those negative scenarios, we would say, okay, we need to slow down, maybe take a different approach. Of course, we hope it will be a positive scenario where we will have enough increment to do the next tranche and the next and the next.
And then, last question here is, of course, this is going to cover the whole city, which allows developers to tackle literally any home that sort of fits this bill, which could be one of thousands. To that effect, from a typical TIF perspective, we're looking at improving an area for which the improvements to one part of that area also help for other parts and it's sort of a domino effect of sorts. This is going to be a little bit different because we could conceivably have these improvements spread out across the city such that a repair of a vacant home here on the east side has no bearing on the vacant home on the west side and therefore you don't get that domino effect. I'm curious if there are plans, incentives, or ways that we can encourage concentration or if, how do we think about those efforts?
Yeah, I mean, that's the whole premise of the framework for community development that we've been implementing since 2020, which is building off of strength and concentration within the impact investment areas, within our community areas of focus. And in addition, we have the additional geographies of focus as well in partnership with the state. So, it is exactly that concentration so that you're achieving whole block outcomes, so that you're moving the needle, that does actually support and shift. The one thing too is that I think it is a little bit different when you talk about east side and west side, but, you know, we have over 194, you know, neighborhoods represented in the TIF district. And what's also different than other TIFs is that some of the neighborhoods and some of the council districts in this instance are actually supporting the, you know, you have the first council district per se. Those number of properties, they are all part of the increment that's supporting that first tranche, which is actually supporting districts that have had long-term disinvestment. So, it's also a shift in terms of paradigm of how we're thinking about tax increment financing and the use of this tool, which is allowed. So, it is still building from strength, it is still concentration of resources to help achieve whole block outcomes, and it's a holistic approach that covers everything from the vacant properties to the infrastructure, to the people, the job training, like it is comprehensive of everything.
Yeah, and I appreciate that. So, I know we have, you've been very consistent and that's how we should be doing it. I'm just curious mechanically, how does this program account for that? Is that in like the selection of the properties and the incentives or how do we do that within the program?
Yeah, so, I mean, within the TIF, that is how we looked at the selection of properties. It's one reason why, you know, the ninth district has the largest number on the TIF district because that is also where we have a significant amount of our impact investment areas plus our other geographies of focus, knowing that we need to have that investment there. That also overlays with where we're leveraging the other funds, you know, whether it be state funds, federal funds, you know, nonprofit philanthropic funds. So, you know, as we're looking at the properties that were INREM eligible, that we own, what do we need to round out getting a whole block outcome, where does that fall into place?
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just a clarifying question, will all the properties be available on day one?
No.
So, I just, I think it's important to kind of communicate that to the general public. To kind of go along with this question.
So, for those, for the council members as well as those listening or watching online or watching this at some point when it's replayed on Charm TV, the, all of the properties are not available when this starts. So, I want to remind everybody that what makes up the district is that there are a certain number of properties that actually have already been rehabbed, they've achieved their use and occupancy permit, some of them may be available and may be available for sale or rent right now. And same for the ones that we have, that we've picked up from 23 and 24. And then, we also have the ones that do have open permits. So, those are ones that we expect will be available sooner than later. But a lot of the properties were also chosen for the TIF district, were ones that were INREM tax lien foreclosure eligible, so that as we are finishing out that process, we're acquiring because part of this is, as to reinforce my answer to Councilman Conway, it is about achieving those whole block outcomes. It is about transforming our neighborhoods in a holistic approach and part of that is doing the acquisition so that we can make sure that we're achieving the whole block outcomes and working with our neighborhood partners on the development work. So, this isn't that there's now, you know, 7,000 properties that are going to be available for purchase or sale. We still have, the city still only owns, you know, around 800 of those, 900, and there still is a great number that are needing to be acquired. But we are going to be, you know, part of this is looking at the INREM eligible ones to also see, you know, who owns them because we do want to prioritize if we have somebody that is a legacy resident or someone that has owned a property. I've talked to many people that are like, I own a vacant property that was my grandparents' and I just haven't been able to do anything with it because nothing's happening around it, they won't fund me for it, I can't get insurance for it. And we want to also reach those people to help them be able to, you know, have funds available.
Yeah, I want to thank you, Mr. President, for, that was very helpful. In this presentation, is there a map of the sort of first level of, or the first group of homes that are...
No, there isn't a map of a first tranche because we wouldn't know what the first tranche would be actually until after we put together the continued analysis. The way that any tax increment financing works in the city, this is not different from that in that the council approves the bond issuance at a level and then within that, we have to meet certain criteria and pull together what tranches make sense to be able to go for that first tranche and what properties then, you know, would potentially be eligible to receive funds. But the first tranche would go, in terms of to sell the bonds, the first tranche then goes back to the Board of Finance for approval, they have to underwrite that first tranche. Now, reminding that the first tranche of bonds, we're using that increment to be able to get us, you know, to that first sale.
Okay, thank you.
Chairman Stokes?
Thank you, Mr. President. Commissioner Kennedy, I'm glad to hear that you're looking at a target because we, council people somehow already have that disinvestment and I'm glad y'all are looking at it that way because a lot of times, money always went to the most already influential neighborhoods and I'm glad to see that you targeted it. And I don't know if anybody asked this question, the TIF, I'm glad the TIF is now, we always, people complain about it giving to all the big developers and companies, I'm glad to see it's in communities. How do the community and how do small developers and can they benefit from the TIF? And only asking that, somebody might have asked already, but so the public can know they can take advantage and see exactly how the TIF work just for small developers and community, community CDCs, community associations also.
So, I think one of the pieces, we've been working actually with our communities and our community development partners, our community development corporations, looking at actually the properties on the TIF. That's a number of the meetings that we've done is meet with them to go through what properties in their kind of geographic areas are going to be on the TIF district. Also, we have a number of, so we have a number of our community development corporations, our community development partners that we've talked to about those properties. Actually, right now, we also still have available and out our small developer request for qualification. So, if anybody is listening, please go and apply. That covers certain geographic areas with the intent that those applications will be reviewed in partnership with community to create the list of development partners that then could also benefit. And also, like we said, we're going to be doing outreach to all of the 2296-ish number, 2296 number of INREM eligible, just to get some preliminary information on if there is an actual person behind that that would be interested and that we could kind of get in a pipeline for their own renovation work as well.
And will there be technical assistance for those organizations also? Can you explain?
There will be technical assistance. I'm actually, I received, I had put a couple of requests out. I have a proposal that the agency is reviewing now to help with some technical assistance specifically around the Charm City Roots program that we think could translate over and assist with this as well for either small developers and/or a person that owns a property that would want to renovate it themselves.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's one person who signed up, Mr. Jared Jackson.
Mr. President, I have a couple other questions.
Yeah, there's one person, I think as opposed to when people come to testify, we're allowed to do one round robin for council members and then we go to the public. So, at this point, we're going to go to public testimony. There's one person that's signed up, Mr. Jared Jackson from Winata. Oh, yeah. Please still state your name, organization.
Yes, sir. Jared Jackson.
And please press the right button, it should turn red. Thank you.
Thank you. Jared Jackson, Housing Development Officer, West North Avenue Development Authority. Good afternoon, Council President Mosby, council members Torrance, Porter, Bullock, Cohen, and other members of the Baltimore City Council. My name is Jared Jackson. I'm a Housing Development Officer here at the West North Avenue Development Authority and I'm also a Baltimore native. On behalf of Chad Williams, our Executive Director, he truly regrets his inability to be present for this testimony due to multiple scheduling conflicts, which include supporting the Baltimore Development Corporations, Baltimore Together Summit as a leadership sponsor, speaking on rebuilding Baltimore's future through community and neighborhood development and appearing with the governor soon to announce the coming of a new grocery store to West Baltimore that Winata is also funded. The Maryland General Assembly established the state of Maryland West North Avenue Development Authority for Baltimore City, also known as Winata, on October 1st, 2021, to create a comprehensive plan for housing, economic, transportation, and neighborhood development along West North Avenue. The authority serves as a public purpose. Its function is to promote the revitalization of a neighborhood, both for the benefit of the neighborhood's residents and for the general purpose of economic development. The authority has five legislative powers and authorities, which two of those are relevant to this testimony. First, to ensure that money is being spent effectively and efficiently by the state and city for development and that development is happening in the appropriate way for West North Avenue. Secondly, to provide advisory services to the state and city agencies on planning and development for Baltimore City. The West North Avenue Development Authority's Executive Director also counsels the city, counsels the governor, and the state Finance and House Ways and Means Committees on economic development matters within Baltimore City. The proposed Baltimore Citywide Affordable Housing Bond Issuance Ordinance 24-0694 is an efficient and effective use of city resources in partnership with the Maryland DHCD and West North Avenue Development Authority. We also believe that these resources will be used strategically under the leadership of Commissioner Alice Kennedy to address vacancies and blight, which will assist in the state and city increasing property sales and income tax revenue. The West North Avenue Development Authority, through its partnership with Baltimore City DHCD, was engaged in the concept and planning of this initiative. The initiative goals of prioritizing residents at 60% AMI and legacy residents who are renters or homeowners meet the state's goal through Winata, a revitalization without displacement. Therefore, our agency fully supports the approval of Baltimore City's Ordinance 24-0694, Citywide Affordable Housing Issuance. We also thank all the members of Baltimore DHCD for their work in making this initiative a reality and our Executive Director wants to give out a special thanks to Stacy Freed for her efforts with this. I thank you all, members of the council, for allowing me to testify. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Jackson. At this time, is there anyone else from the public who would like to testify during this time period? Hearing and seeing none, Chairman Bullock is going to take over.
All right, and thank you, Mr. President. All right, Councilmember Ramos, you had additional question?
Yes, sir, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do have a couple of other, a few other questions. I wanted to understand a little bit more about DHCD's and Finance's capacity for carrying out this work. So, will we have like a special unit working on this? I mean, Commissioner, you had mentioned that it's a similar, people who are asking for the funding as part of their capital stack would apply similar to what other financing programs that DHCD has through the neighborly and all of that. So, is that going to be your same staff that's going to be working on those things?
Yeah, it's under our project finance team, which is a whole separate team that works on a number of our different grant programs and financing programs.
I'm anticipating that this is going to really be something that you're going to need more capacity for. Is that something that you're working through with the mayor's office?
Yeah, and we have actually increased capacity in that agency, in that division of the agency as well. And we are evaluating if we would need to have another grant manager under that, but we have increased capacity.
Yeah, I just, I know that, you know, hearing from some folks on the ground that sometimes reviews and things like that take time and I don't, I don't think we have the time, so...
No, we don't. And, you know, the, we've streamlined actually all of, you know, within the agency as a whole over the last three years, we've streamlined the capital budget process for capital projects, for grant review, we've streamlined what documents are needed, we've actually limited, like reduced the number of documents that are needed and have, you know, worked quickly to kind of move those through. you know, worked quickly to kind of move those through. So we've made changes internally just to process. And then we have evaluated staffing capacity. And like we said, we've also increased capacity as well.
Director, I would imagine that this is also going to be something you're going to need more capacity for in terms of understanding, doing the analysis relative to the assessments and the increment, talking with the bondholders, you know, all of that. Do you anticipate more capacity?
We started looking at this last year. We looked at our liens unit to make sure that it would keep up with a higher flow. And we made some internal changes to add additional resources there. We will monitor both within revenue collection and within treasury if we have sufficient capacity. I do believe at this time that we do have that capacity, but I'm going to be looking at it very closely as we start to ramp up.
Okay. Another question that I have is, it seems to me, and I looked through the vast list, and when you get a chance, it would be helpful to have a breakdown of like when this first tranche of increment is going to occur and what the properties are. And then what's, what are the properties that are be eligible for the funding? Because it's all kind of meshed up in this list here. But.
Councilmember Ramos, is that an official request? You can restate that?
Sure, yes. So we have, you know, you're not going to be ready for it now, I understand.
No, that, I mean, we wouldn't be doing that until after the legislation is, is passed.
I'm understanding that, I understand that. But I think we both were just, Councilman Conway and I were also just curious about what is it that, what are those properties we're actually taking increment from for this first tranche? And which ones are actually going to be eligible for the TIF? And right now, it's all, it's all lumped in.
To answer, for that question, yes, we can get you the two separate property lists. We could get that later today to the, to the committee. If you're just looking for the property list that separates out, the property list that's creating increment, and then the property list.
Right, and I realize you won't have the amount yet because some of the assessments haven't been redone.
No, we're actually, this is part of, in order to actually go, in order to actually go to market with the first set of bonds, you have to, there's a process with ESTAT that's underway on what creates that baseline increment. So we won't have that until after the legislation pass and until we're going on into the first tranche of bonds. But we do have the addresses for what are the properties that will be used to create the increment for the first tranche, and we have the properties that will be eligible.
If we can have that, that would be great. And then when you do have the, that first amount and report it back to the committee, that would be helpful. And I can add it into an email so that we have a formal request. I think, you know, just because I'm curious. So I noticed that on the list, we don't have some of the vacant properties that I know of in my district that are actually fully rehabbed. But they still have the vacant building notice on them. And I think that's actually a set of property, I would imagine citywide, it's another 300 properties, I'm guessing, that could have easily been added to this. But we have not done that work to figure out, I mean, I know where they are in my district, but not in the rest of the city. So I guess my question is, we have to do that work for the vacancy tax anyway to find them. But can we then, once we find all of them, we can amend this and add them in? Is that correct? Is that your plan? Or you want to wait for the second tranche?
No. We're not, we're not planning on amending, once the TIF district is created here, we're not going to amend it. We, we knew that there were some level of properties out that did still have a VBN that were fully rehabbed. We are in the process of actually identifying, we have a pretty good idea citywide of, of where those are and who are there. We've been working on trying to help people move, move those through. But we are not planning on, we are not planning on amending the list or amending the district after it is, it is approved.
Well, right.
And we've taken that into consideration. You know, we, we actually are over prescribed on the number of properties right now to be able to meet the minimum of 125%.
Just one clarifying piece, because I want you to continue on this train, but can you explain to others how this comes to pass, where you have the renovated properties, they have the VBNs? Because I know we've talked about this before, but can, for everybody else's edification, can you talk about that a little bit?
Yeah, so there's a couple of different ways that this happens. One, you have a property that was renovated and no one pulled any permits whatsoever. They, they flew under the radar of doing work without a permit, renovated the property and either have it rented or they've, or they've sold it to someone, so it's occupied with a vacant building notice on it. And they would have done that as well before the legislation passed that Councilwoman Ramos sponsored to require the disclosure in a residential contract of sale that now requires a disclosure of if there is a vacant building notice.
Which are a lot of people are breaking the law.
Yeah. Well, you also have many that were prior to that legislation, they were prior to that legislation. And then you have ones that did pull permits, did do work, did get inspections. Electrical was inspected, plumbing was inspected. But they missed the most important and final step, which is the final inspection on the use and occupancy permit itself, not the other building permits. So we've been working to go back with, with those homeowners. A lot of times, those are homeowners, we found a number when we were implementing the bill that Councilwoman Berman passed that required the posting. We found people that came home and they're like, what is this? I have a mortgage, I live here, it's, you know, it's not vacant. And then the other pieces is that they have some that, you know, did pull permits, got inspections maybe on one of their permits, but they didn't get a final inspection on, say, the plumbing permit. So, you know, there's three different kind of categories, and we're working on working through those. But we are not planning on amending the, the TIF district for this to include those in the future.
I guess the only other thing would be that for some residents who are caught in the situation inadvertently, it was not their fault, it's going to be hard for them to afford the renovations and the work that needs to be done in order to get the use and occupancy. So this could have been a funding source for that. Are you planning on using a different funding source to help these residents?
We have a different funding source that we're putting together.
Okay, okay. The second piece is about the, about the mortgages. And I will admit, I'm not as adept at this, which is why I'm asking the question. So there are only two banks that I know of that are giving mortgages for, for Community Land Trust, and hopefully that's grown since the last time I talked about it. And so how, because of the income restriction and, and the fact that, you know, they're, I guess you answered it with the first question in terms of if the restriction goes off in the first sale, although that's not your ideal situation, you want to keep it permanently affordable. I'm just curious how the mortgages are going to work. I mean, do we do have enough mortgage companies that understand this type of financing and would be able to be confident in, you know, financing these projects for the mortgage?
So there are, there's actually been an increase in the number. I just had a meeting with another bank that's coming in on the Community Land Trust lending side. You know, deed restrictive, deed restrictions on sales have been in place for decades in Baltimore that are not associated with a Community Land Trust.
Correct.
And there is no issue with financing and mortgage, and obtaining a mortgage for that with a deed restrictive property.
Okay, so we don't anticipate.
The Community Land Trust because of the ownership is, is the, is the biggest one. But we've actually been working to expand the number of lenders that have an understanding of that and that are coming into the marketplace.
And then the other piece is, it seems to me that we want to hurry up and do tax sale reform because if we don't, right, then a lot of these properties are going to be sold in tax sale. And, and maybe the person who forecloses on the vacant property might ask to use the financing, maybe not, but it's not, it doesn't help us with our control of the outcome of the property. And I know this might be for the mayor's office, that we're, you know, moving slowly but surely towards reform. But it seems to me like you have to have that in order to continue the work with our addressing vacant properties, making sure that more properties are eligible for INREM, and be able to utilize the tax increment financing for, to really control the outcome of the property. And if we have tax sale, it doesn't control the outcome of the property. So I guess I'm just, I'm wondering if, you know, the mayor's office is really thinking about all those puzzle pieces together and we're moving forward on, on how this would work with tax sale.
I know that we've been evaluating the tax sale process while also trying to ramp up the INREM process and the eligibility of properties through that program. I don't have an explicit answer for you. We are thinking about the kind of holistic perspective when it comes to vacant housing and reducing the total number of properties that have VBNs on them. But we can definitely continue conversations with you regarding how the tax sale piece fits into the overall vacant reduction strategy.
I think we have to, we have to eliminate it. I think, and I've said this publicly, and because we're not going to be able to, you know, control the outcome of the property for our whole neighborhood outcomes without it. And so I'm hopeful, I know that the first step is, is the payment plans, which October 2025 is what I've been told, and I'm going to stick with it as one of the first steps to get us there. So just saying that we, I think to make all of this work in a way that's going to be strategic that, you know, that's one of the pieces of this is what I'm saying in terms of the strategy around this. I have, I have some other things that I need to get a little bit more technically, you know, inclined. I guess the last thing would be to think through a little bit about what my colleague was asking regarding the sort of backstop. We do have, as I understand it, we do have one, you know, TIF district that it currently exists where the special taxing district and the money coming from the assessments are not paying back the bonds. And so it's being backstopped by a different entity because that was the commitment. And so I guess I'm just curious, hopefully none of that happens. And it sounds like all your modeling is such that, you know, you've got enough increment that you think will pay back the bonds. But how's that going to work if we don't? And, you know, are we going to need to put an allocation in the budget every year that says, you know, this is for just in case money? How's that, how's that going to work?
No. So as, as Director Moxon had stated previously, all of the TIF bonds that have previously been put out in the city state that the only obligation that we are making is to, is to repay, is to repay the bonds based off of the revenue that's generated from the increment. So there is no requirement, there is no requirement to put in a general fund backstop. There will not be anything that's put in the budget as a payment, as a backstop for those. And, and we are not required to do that. The, the risk is on the, the bondholder and the entity that is purchasing the bonds, and that's where risk lays. But every single one of our TIF offerings clearly states that there is no obligation outside of what is the revenue from the bonds. Director Moxon did have to step away to actually head out for his honeymoon. But I, to make his flight all the way down, I think to Reagan or Dulles. So we do have with us Keenan Rice from Unicap, who has been a part of the city's consulting team on this and has talked about that backstop, the legality and like that question that has come up. So if Keenan wants to provide, if you're so adept, that's why he's here, is to be able to provide any additional information on it.
Sure. Thank you.
Oh, Keenan, just press the little button with the person on it.
On the right.
On the right.
Good afternoon. My name is Keenan Rice. I'm with Unicap. Unicap is the city's financial advisor for TIFs. I'd just like to ask if your question was answered or if you would like some additional information?
Sure, I'm happy to repeat it. So obviously, we know that this is different than a regular TIF and what we've done in the past. So what we've done in the past is create a TIF district that would, and a special taxing district. So that it, the increment would pay for the debt service on the bonds. And then would, and then there would also be the responsibility from, the revenue from the TIF, from the special taxing district. We are not having a special taxing district that would pay for those, you know, especially if we can't, you know, pay for the bonds. In this particular case, the modeling, as the commissioner explained, seemed to suggest that with the increment that we're proposing, that that should be the, you know, the increment will be there for paying back the, the bonds. But it's my understanding from, you know, financing that there has to be an additional backstop somewhere. And whether or not, you know, so the bondholders would know, yep, if they don't make enough money off of this, that we're still going to get paid. And so, with interest. And so I'm just trying to figure out what, what that is. If that, if we're going to have to put in a, because we do have one TIF district right now that has to, is being backstopped by, you know, a different entity. It's not the city because it's not our city obligation. It's, you know, so I just, we're trying to figure this out, that's all. And I'm just, in the spirit of trying to just, again, think of all the scenarios, whether or not, what's the best way to say, I mean, if we're confident that, you know, there isn't that additional backstop, what, what are we thinking here?
So it's a good question, and I'm glad you asked the question. If it's, if it's okay, I'd like to make two distinctions between this TIF district and other TIF districts, which is why we don't have a special tax. The city's TIF policy requires that if a developer is requesting a TIF, we want that developer to guarantee the taxes to pay the TIF. We're going to hold it to its promises, okay? And we, and we enforce that guarantee through the levy of a special tax because it creates a security interest in that guarantee, to back the guarantee. It provides collateral, in other words, okay? The city's TIF policy says when the city is sponsoring a TIF, it doesn't need to provide a special tax or to provide that same guarantee, okay? We still want to make sure the bonds are well secured. The city is a very prudent issuer of bonds, okay? And it's very highly respected in the bond markets because it is a prudent issuer. So what we're doing in this case, because we don't have a developer who can guarantee, you know, provide that guarantee of taxes, we're not issuing the bonds till we already have the taxes on the tax roll. And remember, a special tax is a form of a guarantee of enough taxes. Well, when the other TIF bonds issued by the city, we issued them before the development occurred. In this case, we're waiting to issue the bonds till we have development on the tax rolls, we have the taxes there. So we don't need that guarantee because the taxes are already going to be there. And they're going to be there with 125% coverage, okay? That does not even include the new development from the bond proceeds. We're not even looking at the additional development. The new bond proceeds will provide for additional development, which will even increase the coverage further. We're not even counting that in the coverage. So first of all, we're being very careful, very safe, very prudent in the issuance of these bonds because the city is a prudent issuer of bonds. If worst case happens and these taxes go down and instead of having 125% coverage, we have 90% coverage, we don't have enough money to pay the bonds, the bondholders are taking that risk and they're being compensated for taking that risk. They know the risk, it's being disclosed to them, the risk is appropriate to them. These bonds are being sold to institutional buyers, not to individuals who may not understand the risk and may not, you know, really be in position to take the risk. The bonds will be limited to institutional buyers who can take that risk, they understand the risk, and they're being compensated for the risk. These bonds will probably price, you know, maybe 100 basis points more or less over the city's bonds, okay? The reason the city's paying that additional interest, it's like when you pay an insurance premium to get an insurance company to take risk, you know, for like fire insurance, okay? They take that risk, they get an insurance premium. The city will be paying these bondholders a higher interest rate to take that risk. So the bondholders understand the risk, but they believe, as we do, they will get paid because of the structure that we have, the taxes are already on the tax roll at 125% coverage. So it's really a very safe, prudent means of issuing the bonds.
Mr. Chair, can I restate so that I'm clear?
I will say, I thank you for the explanation. It was clear to me, but again, ask it again, just everybody's clear.
Yeah, thank you. So, so I appreciate that. So the way that I understand it is that with the way that we currently do TIFs, we're like hoping and praying when we, when we issue the bonds, that we will get the tax increment, especially after, you know, the development is done. And because we are hoping and praying, then that's why we needed to get a special taxing district so that we would have money that would fulfill our hopes and prayers, okay? Basically. And in this particular case, because we are looking at the, let's say, the previous year's increment from when. at the, let's say, the previous year's increment from when a property is, from a vacant property to when it is rehabbed and reassessed, so that amount in between the two is going into a pot, that we can say, hey, bondholders, we got the money. So if you can help us out with floating the bonds, we're going to be able to pay you back over time with the funding from these various tranches of increment. Yes?
That's right. That's correct.
Okay, so, so because we, that is money in the bank. It is not hoping, praying that we are going to have the money in the bank.
That's right.
Got it.
Essentially, the prayers are answered, so there you go.
Well, we're hoping.
No, and I will.
Thank you very much for that. I appreciate it.
And I will say, in hearings like this, it is useful sometimes, this process of asking the questions, not only that we get clarity, but also listening public gets clarity too. So, so thank you for asking that. I think you're good. Is there anyone else here who, anything else you would add on that front? Is there any, anything else from the agencies, and anything, anyone else who's here to testify from the public? Okay, there are a couple of things that I do want to at least get through before we leave. Obviously, we don't have a quorum here, so we're not going to do a vote, we're going to recess the hearing, but I'm doing a reference, the amendments, the three amendments that we do have on the bill. So for 0594, as Law had already mentioned, inserting mayor and city, mayor and before city council. Also for 0594, there is an amendment offered by Council President Mosby for, again, on page eight after line five, insert all grants 50,000 or more shall comply with Minority and Women-Owned Business Enterprise regulations as required in the Baltimore City Board of Estimates Regulations on Minority and Women-owned Businesses. And then also, there's another piece in terms of substituting grants and striking a credit rating agency report published in connection to the issue of bonds. And then as DHCD has already mentioned, that there are a number of properties that are going to be added to this list. So thank you for providing that exhaustive list. I know some will be added. So as mentioned, we won't be voting on the bill or the amendments at this point, but did want to have that on the public record. With that, it looks like we are going to then go ahead and adjourn, but what I will say, and I'll take this privilege, so very excited about this moment in time for our city, this is a non-catigous, you know, TIF, but as you mentioned, you know, align share the properties that are vacant in our city in the ninth district. And so just seeing a way forward, a very creative way forward, and one that provides some economic assurances, is very, is very powerful and appropriate. So again, thank you for this work. I know it comes also in auspices of the things that the governor's office is doing, and we talk about that, Baltimore Vacant Reinvestment Council and all that work. So we know it's not going to take one agency, one entity, it's all of us working together and coming from different angles and being very creative with this. So at this point, we will recess the hearing and we'll reconvene at a later date. So thank you for being with us today, and enjoy the rest of your day. Take care.